Welcome to the December 12th Select Board Meeting. Roll call.
Capello here.
Supersub.
I'm sure Mr. Bailey calls. I want you to attend. I ask you all to join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my black United States of America. We do serve a lawful justice and one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, so have a chance to look at the agenda. Corrections attorney. Paulson. Would you approve?
Seconded.
You're seconded. Questions? All of your favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go down with public comment. Everyone each time. All this comment is limited to three minutes per individual, one period of comment for each individual. Visitors should address their comments to the Chair and the Select Board to be body and not to any individual member. Each speaker shall be provided with a single up and in under three minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since this blackboard may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Other comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, Select Board, and/or the town administrator. Anyone, anyone present here like to make comment?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay, Robert Russell, 99 Toll Land Road. I'll keep this up in three minutes. So I just, I know there's some zoning board proposals coming up. I had a nice chat with Joyce a few weeks back at the polls. I haven't actually read, obviously, the body of them. I don't think that's available, but I saw the one regarding the 60 days and political signs. We discussed a little bit about the Reed decision. I know there's some people in town that don't like my signs, and that's fine. I actually don't like my signs, but it's necessary. I just wanted to say that if this board pushes forward a recommendation for a zoning restriction of 60 days prior to election, and if the town passes it, I'm going to challenge it in court. I think it's indefensible. It would be almost certainly struck down. It would be a waste of time for the town and money, and I would be reimbursed for my court fees and my attorney's fees. You don't have to talk to Laura Specter Morgan to figure this out. You can simply read the Supreme Court decision in Reed versus Town Gilbert. It's, it's pretty cut and dry. I think it would be one thing that you guys would probably would serve you better not to send forward, but I doubt that you're going to do anything that would be a recommendation from me. But it will save the town some money, and the only thing I'll lose out of it will be a little bit of time. So I recommend that, that it might get sent forward. Thank you.
Any other, any other public comment?
Yes.
Mr. Grant. Three minutes on common. Please, please come ahead.
I thought the Energy Committee was supposed to be here.
No, no, sir. Good, Select Board meeting tonight.
Right.
Select Board meeting tonight. Could you please state your name and address?
Yes. I'm Ken Grant. I live at 372 Parker Mountain Road. And my comments regarding the posting that has to do with the Energy Committee, also known in my circle as a global warming committee, and that's exactly what it is, but this this posting is still up. If you are interested in a volunteer role with the Energy Commission, please submit an application for appointment to the appointments at Barrington. The day that I submitted my application, you shut it down. Yeah, it's still posted. And so doesn't show my application as being accepted with a role in this committee. And that doesn't, that doesn't add up to two and two. So if it's shut down, then it should be posted that it's shut down. And probably for a good reason. But I, I have quite the people that were posted on it as part of the committee. Some of them are, as I can see, are the Jack Bingham, for one. I didn't see where Jack Bingham owns any property there. Which I find it unusable because I know he lived in Barrington. So I, I know he's on the committee, but all these people are on the committee. They are for, they're aiming for one thing, and that's reducing the global or the energy impact in Barrington. And I, I don't see that as a committee that's being balanced and representing the town. And that's why I'm bringing up my application again. One that you've still got an open got openings or the statement that this, this committee is still open, and my application has already been submitted. The, the important thing is here is they're making accusations of, of the greenhouse gases being emitted by Barrington people. And show me some proof. I would like to see some proof, some scientific actual proof that Barrington's committing Barrington greenhouse gas emissions and where you're getting your information from. The, the other thing that would be important is that
Sir, sir, you have three minutes there.
They're up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I will, I start out asking about an application, which you told me the board was closed. So I'd like that not to, I'd like to have not lost that. So the final, my final comment would be that this committee wants to obtain public funds to target and surveil people and their energy use, and that should not be allowed.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? Anyone on line? If you'll raise your hand if you're on teams, raise your hand. Be recognized if you're on the telephone, you press star six and wait to be recognized.
Now sitting, Mr. Chair?
Give you a few seconds. All right, seeing no other comments, let us proceed. Second hearing, School Board said non-athletes on, okay, I'll talk a little bit about that tomorrow. Mr. McGlars could not come, but Miss Levesque have some comments? Would you like to make some comments?
Hello, I just wanted to give everybody a quick update on the Riverside Rest Home Construction. We passed 6.2 million bonds, million dollar bonds for the start of zoning and getting contractors and getting people to do surveys of the land and make sure that we are all set to start the funding for building. We originally had it for 170 million, which would be the cost of everything, the building, the beginning structures to the final. And then we came, they went back to the drawing board when we voted that that would be way too much. They dropped it to 139. Again, we deliberated for quite a while, and that's when they come to share who you'll hear from. In January, it came up and said that it would cost 6.2 million. And that's what was passed. We should be getting started on making sure that we get the right people doing the right jobs, hiring the right people, things like that. So that's in progress right now.
Thank you.
And so right now we have tentative for January 23rd, Commissioner McGlars. And I imagine accompanied by Representative Levesque as well to make a more comprehensive presentation of what their plan is. We said about 15 minutes so that the Select Board can ask questions beware, but also educate the community members since, you know, the members of the Barrington community have, have an interest in the status and capacity of them. So prepare, prepare questions for future conversation.
Thank you. Anyone have questions now, Mr. President? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Driscoll, I'm set, please.
So by way of introduction, John Driscoll, member of the Planning Board is here and accompany, accompanying him from the table, Joyce Capiello, who's the ex officio member of the Planning Board, full voting member. And so this is something that that hearing feedback from residents and making sure that they understand the process on, you know, what gets on the warrant, how decisions are made, and understand the details. So the tough part, and we hear this all the time, when residents get a ballot in their hands, if they don't know anything about any background of the information on that ballot, the money articles are sometimes easy to decide in the ballot box, but some decisions, zoning amendments, the TIF District Collective Bargaining Agreement, those articles are difficult to come to a reasonable conclusion about in the ballot box without any advanced information. So we're working to provide more information to residents earlier in the process to make sure that everybody that wants to has an opportunity to become educated in the ballot box. Relative specifically to zoning amendments, there's a common misconception about where zoning amendments come from. And that's part of the purpose here, in addition to discuss the zoning amendments that the Planning Board is currently proposing. So zoning amendments are added to the warrant by the Planning Board. So the, the Planning Board, who are citizen volunteers, you know, neighbors in Barrington, have a vision for Barrington that they bring to their role on the Planning Board. Half of their duties and responsibilities pertain to monitoring compliance with applications, subdivision applications, site review applications, and that's a more objective role. They're looking at the rules, they're looking at a project, do these projects meet the rules or not? The subjective part of their position pertains to bringing for changes to the zoning ordinance and their regulations. And that's what they're in the process of right now. So they all have ideas based on their, their roles on the Planning Board and as community members of things they'd like to see change in the zoning ordinance, good, bad, or indifferent. And they, through the process that they're going through, propose those changes to voters, no different than the Select Board proposing capital reserve contributions, et cetera. And so at the end of the day, it's the voters that get to make the decision. And it's important to emphasize that the zoning amendments being proposed don't necessarily have full support from all of the Planning Board members. To get it on the warrant, it takes a majority of the Planning Board members, and it's put to the residents to decide. And that's why it's really important that residents have the opportunity to understand what it means, the pros, the cons, et cetera. And so the, like I said, introducing Mr. Driscoll, we've asked him to come here tonight and just give in the context of a neighbor to a neighbor, some context to the zoning amendments that are currently being proposed and be able to answer any questions and hear from Mrs. Capiello as well. And the Planning Board will be holding their final work session on the zoning amendments tomorrow night. And they will finalize what amendments they will take to their first public hearing, which
January 3rd.
Thank you. And if there's a need for a second one, there will be one on January 17th. And so with that, do you need any more introduction? Are you ready?
Ready to go here.
Fantastic.
Sure, sure how much depth you want to get into them, but you can start with the first one. Do you want me to read them or?
The Select Board has a copy. And for anybody that's watching at home, the documents are linked in the town administrator report, and they'll be there, so.
Well, this one, this one was actually brought up last year at the town meeting and defeated by four votes. And the bottom, the generally what it concerns is Barrington Sand and Gravel, who has two parcels on Route 125 that are commercial properties. These, for some reason, never became commercial, even though they're running a commercial operation. They're in the general residential district. So I guess there was some conversation sometime ago where the zoning administrator talked to the owners, and they didn't realize they weren't commercial. So as a result, this was brought forth. And as I said, it lost by four votes. So the board feels we'll just bring them back again, and maybe people have greater understanding of what it is, so.
And I'm just pulling it up on the map, and I'll try to do that for these that, that change zoning, just to give you an idea of where Mr. Driscoll's talking about. So this is Commerce Way right here. This is Bumford Road, which is essentially the driveway entrance to the pit back there.
Total of about 107 acres, both these parcels, so it's good size. But it's been operated as a commercial enterprise for years. Yeah, Barrington Sand and Gravel. I don't know how long Steve's been running that, but quite a while.
But basically, this just kind of makes the lot go what actually exists.
Yeah, because as I said, two lots fronting 125 that are already commercial, the small lots, about 16 acres total. And Real Line Bumford Road, South Bumford Road.
Allow a question for clarification? I'm sorry.
The, the best time to do that would be at the Planning Board public hearing. This isn't a question and answer with the community.
Okay. I'm only, what he stated, he, he said that this kid, the item that came up that didn't pass by four, what he
Right, Mr. Grant. And so. Number two. Yeah. Second one is actually a combination of two that were on the ballot last year. The parts that discusses the home occupation being restricted to 30% of 500 square feet. Actually, lost by that was 128 votes. And the portion that mentions back then that it only had to be run by legal residents, he used the term legal residents, which must have may have caused some concern among the voters, wondering what that actually meant. So we're bringing it back this time by just saying it can employ one non-resident and continuing to keep the 30% of 500 square foot maximum in the dwelling unit.
I have a question. Sure. Non, non-resident employees to one, right? What about upward companies like lawn care, landscaping, that have employees that don't have and not working?
Yeah, it may be more of the resident business rather than an occupation. There is a distinction.
Okay, so this is great. What about farming and agriculture?
That would then be a business. So this is home occupation, which I guess the idea was you wouldn't really have a lot of people come to the house. I suppose it could be a, a professional operation or maybe a single-chair salon. I don't know if some people would do that, so there's not a lot of traffic and so forth that disrupt the neighborhood. If you want to do a business, which is the next one regarding home businesses, that's a higher level of attitude. It's allowed. That's a distinction between the occupation.
I think what I heard last year, that was some confusion for that. There would definitely just conceal, it sounds like people are just assuming it's a business and then
Well, yeah, they don't realize there's the difference. They consider them both the same thing. So that's part of the learning experience you were talking about, and how you do that, but without having a five-page explainer with everything.
Right, and I would, I would put to all of you who have made the same charge to the Planning Board, helping to make sure people understand what they're voting on is most important. The, the decisions that they make, they have the ability to make. But if you have ideas for how to, to get information out, this is, this was an idea we had. And, you know, we intend to, you know, do the best we can. But you're all residents, you have friends, family, and neighbors, so don't hesitate to make suggestions to the Planning Board for zoning amendments or, you know, among us for the rest of the warrant.
Questions on that one? The next one does concern home businesses. Some, this one also appeared last year, and this one lost by 177 votes. I'm sorry, 128 votes on this one. So essentially what they're doing is actually exactly what was brought up last year. In effect, reducing the amount of the business they occupy from 4,500 square feet to 2,000 square feet or 10% of the lot, whichever is less. Oh, thank you. Sure thing. And any questions on that? That includes storage and some of you do an accessory or primary dwelling structure or an outside area which is adequately screened neighbors. No questions? Okay. And the next one we have actually was brought up in 2018, and again was defeated. That one actually lost by 114 votes. This is on Oak Hill Road. And it concerns 10 parcels. Six of the parcels are actually, five of the six parcels along the road are actually anywhere from two and a half to seven acres and contain single-family dwellings. There's no room for a large expansion, which being in the town's center would allow you to construct multifamily dwellings and, which would have to be a mixed use, so they'd have to include commercial as well as residential, which really wouldn't fit who's, you know, you're not going to attract a lot of business. Just go up Oak Hill and there'd be a stop and shop up there. And the other three parcels, the other four parcels actually are slightly larger of 21 and 28 acres, and they sit a little further back from the road. That was up there. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it went up to the upper right. And that small one there, those are those three parcels. And the remaining two parcels are actually on Franklin Pierce Highway. And down, there'll be lots, 77, which actually with this weight, we're calling for the down.
It's this one. Oh, I see the bar is in front of it. I was highlighting it.
77. And 79 and 1.1 sitting up there. And 77 actually is under development right now. It's a commercial residential entity planning to build in there that's taking place. And that's been approved? Not completely, no, no. Actually, the last thing we sent back was for being sent to CMAs for stormwater analysis because it's terrain issue. It did come back, and there was a lot of impact on the wetlands offer over 5,000 square feet, whose manager adjusted, moved the road, and it's only like 3,000 minor impacts. And he's done a lot more with the bio-retention area, which will pull off the rainwater off that hillside, take care of it. Any questions? Next. Okay, the next one is a new one that was brought forth by the zoning administrator, building inspector, and proposed by the Board of Force. All Article 18s are just definitions, and this is a definition of an attached building, which used to say have the walls in common with each other. And one would assume if you visual aid here, if you had a two-story house and you wanted to attach this little house here, the common wall, one would assume would be the wall, the back wall of this one and the rear wall of the other house, the larger house. Well, as it was brought up by me in conversation, what somebody did, they had the house here, they built another thing here, and they put a fence connecting the main house with the little one and said, that's a wall. So it's legal. So it would be so they're changing that definition to say it has to be connected by a common roof. Well, and initially there was some confusion with this little roof here have to reach there for be a common roof. And this explained to me, that just mean it has to be on the building, and that would make it a common roof. So.
Attached. The roof that has to be attached to the building.
Has to be attached to the main structure, yeah. It doesn't have to be in common with the larger roof, which would have been a reach, obviously, for negative situations.
So dog there, man, like a dog watch.
Yeah.
Dog block there.
But it was kind of interesting, the length of some people go to try to stretch the, the meaning of the zoning rule. Okay, so see the next one here. Eximal one, that's my, yeah. That one was, just checking my devil notes here again. They're just removing anything related to actually 318. There were four, four subparts of 380. And they're going to move everything to Article 20, which was just concerned signage. In fact, any of the subdivision or site plan regulation to concern signs, signs in the past had already been changed and moved out of the discretion of the where we review things, and this goes to the zoning administrator in the plan, in the building department to determine if it's correct or not.
So it's just sort of a housekeeping now, right?
It was, yeah. Yeah, there's that one, and then there's another one coming up. All right, the next one coming up is the sign one that was discussed in open, open discussion. That's a new one, too. And the board really hasn't really reviewed that. You agree with that?
A second to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
In the current zoning regulations, it says, under the exceptions for signs, and because of the Reed case, we can't specifically say political signs or business signs or religious signs. It says additional signs may be posted 30 days prior to an election.
Right.
So we already have a time limit there, and this is extending that to 60 days.
Yep.
And I'm assuming 30 days, or frankly, I didn't know about that, that it hasn't been widely known or hasn't been enforced.
Right.
So this is giving a more realistic timeframe.
Yeah. And you can only, so January 25th is the first date to sign up if you intend to run for office.
For town elections, that's close. I'll verify for sure, nodding. I think there's actually a post on the town's website.
Yeah, through the 3rd of February. It's a Friday, and they're only doing business for these, then it's not opening up the clerk's office or anything else, but
Yes.
So I guess it is what it is. As Joe says, I guess it's just doubling the time, so it's already in the system.
And it could be, and I don't know if this was feedback for that intended purpose, but there is, there are restrictions on what can be included in any warrant article to make sure that it passes muster. So you can't add a lot of explanation or description. But one of the things, if that warrant article passes, moves forward from the work session tomorrow night, maybe it would be valuable to clarify that, you know, instead of amending, you, you say, you know, amend from 3260. So it's clear what exists now. And generally, that's, you know, acceptable additional language to include other than you know, long descriptions that might lead a voter to make a certain decision, which is the, what you want to avoid.
Yeah, that's a good point, just what I'm extending is from 30 days to 60 days, just to The next one is one that was discussed at the Planning Board a couple of sessions ago. And really, there wasn't much talk. Do you agree, Joyce? Not much was discussed beyond that. I mean, originally, the proposal was to increase the lot size from 80,000 square feet to 120,000, 2 acres. But originally, we're talking about a frontage of 300. But originally, we're talking about a frontage of three hundred feet. And I guess there was some discussion and we said, well, compromise at two hundred fifty feet. But beyond that, it never really for the discussion. I think there were a couple of members that were just said, well, why are we changing what it is now? So I think tomorrow we'll push that out and decide.
And if there were any article on here that I think would have the most widespread interest in the community, it would probably be this one.
Yeah.
And because that's a, that's a big change. And, you know, I know some of the select board members here either campaigned or discussed with residents, the very generic topic of maintaining Barrington's rural character. And I think there's, there's a lot of question marks about exactly what that means and how you accomplish that. And so the, from what I understand, that was part of the motivation from the member who proposed this change. Now, whether or not this is a way to accomplish that or not is up to the voters to decide. But the idea being having larger lot sizes means we're more spread out and, you know, larger minimum lot sizes. And if we're more spread out, then we're going to be more rural. The town center zoning district was established back in two thousand and seven under the same goal of maintaining Barrington's rural character, but the, the approach to it was different. The approach to it was let's consolidate our commercial and dense residential development to one area, the intersection of nine and one twenty-five. And then the rest of the forty-eight square miles can be rural, so that we have a commercial tax base, we have a place for people to go, we have businesses for residents to patronize, and that's a way to accomplish the rural character. And so, you know, I know we've talked at the select board that the select board doesn't necessarily have a lot of duty and authority to pursue much to, to affect the rural character of Barrington through the zoning ordinance, because that's the jurisdiction of the planning board. But an article like this would be discussed under the topic of, yes, this would maintain a rural character, or no, it wouldn't. It would, it would cause the development to be more spread out and it would end up developing more of Barrington. And so it'll be interesting to see where the planning board goes on that one and if it a- actually ends up moving forward to the public hearing.
Right. And then we have, of course, the zoning change that took place with those large developments that started across from the middle school and pending one for eighty and we quickly watched any more of those taking place.
Right. And that was an amendment that changed last year.
Yeah. Because I think the eighty-one would be restricted to twenty-one under the new zoning and seventeen on the forty. So those big changes last.
That zoning amendment relative to residential density in the village district changed last year. That, that's an article, amendment that changed last year.
John, what is GR and AR? Oh, those are general residential and neighborhood residential. Most of the town is general. So if you look on the zoning app, it's proportioned around. Is it? It seems odd to have the village district walk to a dose of two, which I thought last time, it sounded like the village more town center, you're looking for denser, right? The town center would be, the frontage is less. For example, along one twenty-five in the general, in the regional commercial, this is seventy-five foot setback, building setback. But once you get into the town center, it's only fifty feet. And just so you can allow real speech. Frontage is different too, so.
Was that feedback that you wanted to, to go back to the planning board?
But we used to spell those out in the, in the warrant article, we actually write it. We did, we, we spell out general residential.
That's a good point, because certainly the, you know, elaborate on that, right?
And.
Just a, just use the term residential and not worry about including the districts, just simplify it as much as possible.
Yeah, I think you have to include the districts, but I think providing some description saying residential zoning districts. But I think also what I heard you say is that the town center zone, changing it in the town center zone might not adequately accomplish the density goals of the town center.
Right, into, into, right, commercial.
So that was part of the, part of the amendment last year, changing the density, the residential density in the village district was, was kind of about that, because what the, what the planning board saw was that the density allowance for residential density was too high and it incentivized too much purely residential development, when the real or the goal of the planning board at the time was for more commercial development, expanding the commercial tax base. So they reduced the density of residential in order to make it more attractive for commercial development. I don't know this, but John and Joyce can bring this back to the planning board. It could be that the justification for increasing the lot size in the town center zoning district also would also point, aim to that goal of disincentivizing residential development and incentivizing commercial development.
And it's.
Because this is just residential, lot size minimums residential.
And a lot not, not too far from there, adjacent to the middle school lot, just sold for commercial use, twenty-seven acres, so. That will help.
I'm curious what all of you think about this. I had an opportunity to see actually quite a few people over the weekend, so I asked them what they thought about this. Now, these were all people who lived in Barrington for a while, so they bought here, it was much more economical than it is now. And so their concern was that this makes Barrington much more expensive as a place to live. But I'm curious if people have any feedback we can take back to the planning board.
Well, just the fact, based on this one, if you, you know, the cost of your house includes two acres of land, X amount of dollars, and now it's fifty percent more. It's going to increase the cost of the housing. So. He's forgetting his wheels on this thing.
Oh, we should probably lock them, I guess. That's an easy fix.
That's what we can talk about. Most people wanted mixed use, right? Some areas where you had dense and areas that didn't have dense.
So just as a background to what we're discussing here, the second phase of the master survey was on Saturday morning and this was discussions with residents. I actually was at the transportation table, but maybe you could share something about land use.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like the general consensus was, and then when they were given different options and what they liked, it seemed like people liked mixed use, areas that you had that was more rural and areas that were more dense and you know, I think the, the point of having requiring larger lots is just causing a lot more sprawl into areas that could be more open spaces for search. So it, it's, it's an interesting debate. And I don't know if in the master plan survey, I know they had the questions about that that we answered. I don't know what the consensus was.
You like, how many?
Like how lot sizes and how, you know, they did favor single-family houses.
Yeah.
The top five things was rural community, more conservation land, more recreation, more bike paths and walking trails and, and single-family homes.
Because I thought maybe accessory dwellings where you could add a small apartment or something would be higher up on.
Yeah, there's too much activity to handle.
In the survey, they're still tabulating the results of the survey. They kind of gave a snapshot at that, but they'll have a full analysis of the, the actual survey results from the six hundred respondents, which I think will tell a much clearer story from the results than the, the kind of quick overview they gave ahead of that session.
Final one is more housekeeping.
Was this on the eighty thousand, hundred twenty thousand? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, that's, that's the state out there. I mean, mixed use and the perfect land is great, but you know, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have gas, we don't have sewer. So subjects and wells are going to be challenging for those builders. And let's be honest, we're getting away from, hey, let's bring in the commercial customers, owners, businesses and land. And that way, we don't bring other people along that's going to task our systems, because that's our biggest issue right now. We're popping up houses left and right in Barrington, but there's no commercial route to come in. Okay, we have this many, you know, this much of tax money and, you know, it's going to help offset that.
Yeah, I hope the TIF thing kind of works to help things out. Talking about a community water system, it's privately owned, but go through different parcels and different things. Which I guess they put the wells on the village place area to help some of the more commercial places. So that was in effect, it only started then.
So they have joint wells.
Well, I think the well that's on the it was, it was Judge Taylor's score that people were concerned about, about impacting that. And his well was concerned about that, so they put a well on. Yeah. Yeah.
But the point is, it was pleased after you'd entered.
Well, I think we're on this, this particular thing. There is concern about the water supply. Just where we're going to get water. There are people already that are having troubles with their wells. And if we continue to draw water from the geographer and then it'll run out at some point or, or certainly people have dug wells or had wells down, who begin to notice that their wells don't work.
Well, I guess the good news or the bad news is the latest population figures put out by the state that you use for the figures. We're going to top out around thirty years and about a thousand more people. Because we got around seventy-five people in the last ten years, now it's going to be sixty-five and forty-five and then around twenty, from twenty forty to twenty fifty, so.
I'm surprised at that projection. I thought here would be.
Well, twenty fifty, I'll be a hundred and three years old. And even the Gen Xers will be what, seventy to eighty-five?
It's going to last forever.
Yeah. So just worrying about, you know, do we have to build another school? I don't think you have to worry about that stuff, you know. I think we're just going to grow old together. New Hampshire's population will top out at about a million and a half and you know. Stay rural. When you read in Arizona, you know, there's one community, it's spread into building and development for three hundred thousand people. But they don't have any water.
Yeah.
We have water, actually.
Just don't tell the people in Arizona.
They need a Richardson Pond Dam, that's what they need.
That's what they need. I'll sell them one. Have I got some snake oil for you? To elaborate on John's point about the water system, the, and the comment about having the the allowance to have the well that serves commercial property in the conservation open space of separately owned property. That's the kind of, those are the kind of resiliency things that we want to evaluate with the TIF district. Because each commercial entity on their own establishing a well and a water supply is only as good as that well or water supply. And what we heard from them when we met with them and, and have talked to them, we've also heard from the state, is that's a vulnerable setup to, to have it that way. As, you know, the chair mentions, who knows what the water supply will look like in fifty years, a hundred years. And so the ability to, in, for the town to invest in evaluating a connection among those to beef up the resiliency, improve the commercial development potential and the redevelopment potential is something interesting that we'll, that we intend to look at.
You don't know what's going to happen, you know, this is more growth along Holland Road or so, so what's needed to be stretched with the Swings Lake Water Association is what, fifty or sixty people? And they have to expand. And as part of getting permission and developer, he'll have to tie into that.
Right.
Assume the costs be a taxpayer-supported thing.
Right.
There's a lot of things that might be able to do.
Yep.
And we do have a lot of ponds, so. All right, last item is another housekeeping issue. They wanted to add something. There is a list of items that are under this, this section, which I had to bring. It includes, that doesn't include something called poles and pilings. And that was brought up. We recently had a on Route Four and Warren Road, concerns that the, the buffer had been disrupted or run over by a homeowner. And as part of that, there was discussion, how come the, on the buffer, as we look down, there was a fence above forty feet into the buffer and a shed thirty feet into the buffer. And as it was explained to me by the zoning administrator, as long as it allows the free flow of water to the wetland and is on pilings, which the shed was, and there are poles, which the fence has, the fence is actually supported by poles that allows water, that is perfectly legal. But apparently, there was nothing about poles or pilings in the regulations, so this is a brand new one that just came out, I think, when on the ninth of December, so. That's, that's the point of it. That would become number, the fifth part, I guess. In the list of items, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you kindly. Yes, so anybody interested, work session at the planning board tomorrow night. And their goal is to finalize the list of warrant articles, zoning amendment warrant articles that they'll bring to a public hearing, which is the, the kind of formal invitation to residents to come in and opine about what the planning board is, is preparing to bring to the, the town meeting warrant. And at that public hearing, if there aren't any changes, additions or changes to the language, then that will be the last public hearing. If they add anything or change the language, then there'll be a second public hearing where they'll do the same thing. And so tell your friends, tell your neighbors, anybody you think that might be interested, and that's a way to participate in the process. And if you have other comments to share with the planning board, you can do that through your select board liaison or, you know, send it to me and I'll get it to staff.
Next is a public hearing, right? Please refund this, seven point five percent of those utilities retirement contributions, amount to twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Yes.
Are there any questions or concern from the select board? Are there any public comments? If you've already commented, you can comment if you address your comments to this particular refund. Don't see anyone here. Anyone online, please raise your hand or request the raise hand feature on your computer or if you are on telephone, star six, wait for recognition.
Does it go to fund balance? It's a work, the budget for the, another supposed budget.
Great question. So RSA thirty-one ninety-five pertains to unanticipated revenue and it allows a community to accept and expend those funds. And so no different than a grant that, that we would have, and these would be funds, once accepted, that the select board would be, would be available for the select board to spend on priorities outside of the operating budget or otherwise.
I don't see any comment or any request for comments online.
I do not either.
There is no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion to accept and expend HB twelve twenty-one and HRS seven point five percent refund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars nine hundred and fifty-three.
Mr. Gibson seconds. See him nodding. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. Consent agenda. Want, want to take anything off of the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I believe that we have approved the consent agenda as well.
Motion seconded. Any comments? All those in favor? Very good, thank you. Point, I think we have none at this point.
Correct.
Fact reports, Mr. McGyver.
Thank you. So we read the, read through the work anniversaries at the first meeting of the month, I include them in my report for additional recognition. But I'll skip down to ask the town. So the questions keep coming, which is great. We're actually just talking about maybe getting some just little cards made up that staff and select board members can have. So when somebody gets asked a question that they can't answer, it's easy to, to say, you know, instead of just telling them, hey, I don't know, give them an avenue on where to go and how to find that information. Just a quick review of what we discussed in the past, actually two weeks, because we didn't do a review over Thanksgiving. Questions about town? Questions about town-owned land, um, and where, uh, the, where they are, if they're sold, who are they sold to, things like that. Um, so that in, information, uh, we organize each year in, in the land sale webpages. Um, and you can find that in the link there. Um, how to review my property's assessed value or property record card, what, if there are mistakes? So that's pretty common this time of year. Uh, people are getting their tax bills, they're looking at their assessment, they have some awareness. We always encourage residents on a regular basis to review their property record card. Um, our assessing department's good, but they're not perfect. Uh, and the best way to verify that information is for a property owner to, to look at it themselves, uh, and make sure it accurately, accurately reflects their property. Um, so there's information on, uh, where to find that information, what to do if something is wrong. And then if the, um, property owner and the assessing department don't agree, uh, about an opinion of value or something else, there's details about the abatement process, uh, to make sure that residents are aware of, uh, the recourse available to them. Uh, should they not agree with the, the value, uh, the opinion of value of the assessor. Information about private cemeteries. Um, the town has the Pine Grove Cemetery. That's, uh, the cemetery under the jurisdiction of the cemetery trustees. But we're often asked about people, uh, from people about, uh, cemeteries that might be on their property or they walk by. Um, and actually fifty years ago, the historical society put together a Graveyards of Barrington book, um, which I believe they have copies that they still sell. Do you know, Rick? Yeah, he's nodding. If you're into that kind of thing, it's a comprehensive review of the cemeteries of Barrington, graveyards of Barrington. So anyways, that's, that's that. Uh, what role does town government play in deciding which cable and internet providers serve Barrington? Uh, probably the hottest topic consistently. Um, so this information goes into a lot of detail about what role the town does have and what role the town doesn't have. It's a common misconception that the, that the town picked Breeze Line to be the internet provider. Um, and reality is a lot different than that. It also touches on, uh, the steps that the select board is taking, um, to attract companies to bring fiber to the home, um, on the internet side. And so, um, that's, like I said, always a hot topic. Uh, do I need a fire permit to burn brush in the winter? Um, the answer is probably not, but there are some limits. You have to have full ground cover of snow within a hundred feet. Uh, but we always encourage you, call the fire department if you have questions, if you need a permit. Um, details of the twenty twenty-two property tax rate, which we've talked about in detail. Uh, and who decides how property is subdivided or developed? Ms. Capiel, you mentioned how you had a full room in the, for the planning board meeting, and that's not uncommon. Um, you know, as a requirement of state law and the planning board's regulations and zoning board also, proper, uh, abutting property owners are notified when there's an application for, uh, a property that abuts theirs. And for a lot of residents, that might be the only time in their life that they have a notice of some land use application. And, uh, there's a lot of misconceptions, um, and we do our best to help inform residents. A, a lot of them come to the land use office. Barbara and Vanessa spend a lot of time explaining, um, to neighbors what their rights are, what they can and can't do. But at the root of it, the, you know, who decides these things, um, is, is often what their question is. Um, and at the end of the day, it's whoever owns the property. Uh, New Hampshire has, you have a lot of property rights in New Hampshire. Um, and so we have a zoning ordinance, which we talked about earlier, uh, subdivision and site review regulations, um, and you have to follow those rules. But for the planning board, like I said about their objective decision-making, they, if a project application comes in and it meets the zoning ordinance and their regulations, they're compelled to approve it. Uh, they don't get to make a subjective decision that, oh, I don't like this conservation subdivision. If it meets the rules, then, then they're compelled to, to approve it. Um, and so that's also a common misconception. Thoughts or questions about Ask the Town or any of those questions or answers? Awesome. Can, continue to tell your friends and neighbors. About that.
Moving right along.
Yes.
Just on pond dam reconstruction removal discussion. Mr. Grossman is here, I believe, to, for the conservation. He dropped something there again.
As he comes up to the table to join us, um, by way of introduction and what's in your packet. So the select board asked for, uh, more of a review of the dam removal option, uh, to make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's about, um, the path forward for Richardson Pond Dam. That conversation obviously precipitated from a conversation about how do we pay for the reconstruction and/or removal. Um, we provided some brief, brief background of the stakeholder meeting and the report from SLR. Um, but I got in touch with Ken shortly after the meeting. He requested this, um, letter from Southeast Land Trust asking what, uh, or which describes, uh, what they would need in order to come to an educated conclusion about dam removal. And I know that, um, Mr. Grossman met with the Conservation Commission to discuss the same topic. Um, so unless you need anything else from me, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
So, uh, so everybody already knows what's in the letter. That, and, and the, the takeaway from the letter is that if there's really an interest in doing it, that what needs to happen is that a college just needs to be hired to do a study of the area and a study of what exists there now and what it would look like if the dam would breach. And, uh, we talked about the whole issue with the Conservation Commission meeting and there were a lot of thoughts on it. And, uh, on the matter of whether we would be open to hiring colleges to do the study of the area, we would. Actually, that's part of our mission to, uh, provide information about the natural resources of the town of Barrington, and that fits right in. So that's, that's, that, that's an easy one. Then we talked about, you know, the, the end result, you know, what it would be like to breach that dam. And there were thoughts expressed on both sides of the issue. We didn't, uh, try to hash it out and come to an absolute conclusion. We just, you know, recorded what, what people thought. On the positive side of doing that, it's obvious that, well, it's not obvious because the SLR report said you could spend a lot of money breaching the dam. You know, in terms, you, you do, you do the environmental study, you have to have an engineer approve a plan that would be safe in terms of doing that. Um, you might have a lot of permitting involving state agencies and so on. And for some reason, SLR thought it would cost as much as actually fixing the dam. But I can't speak to that. An engineer would have to speak to that. But so there is the, the question of the cost. And then the other positive side of it is that reaching dams, it's very popular environmentally, uh, among environmentalists. Durham just, they spent a lot of energy talking about it, but they, they just rid themselves of that, uh, that pond they had where the, uh, where the swans were. And, um, in Dover, there was an enormous dam change. The Bellamy River ran through the Sawyer Mills apartment area. And that was a big deal. I mean, that, that happened and that was there. And, and it got done through a partnership of the owner of it and, um, and the state and the, um, not the forest society. I can't pronounce, but it was an environmental group data for that. So it, it, it's done and it's not an insane crazy thing. Um, on the downside of doing it, it's true probably that if you did it for a while, right after you did it, well, it's an understatement to say it wouldn't look the same, but it would probably not look as nice. It would take at some point, three years, five years, ten years. It would probably return to a beautiful natural area. But in the short term, it would not. It would probably be to the eyes of many people unsightly. And having said that, it's a very popular conservation area. The Pooh Trail, which is part of that conservation area, is on Google Maps. It's practically a tourist attraction. And, and so a lot of people, we suspect, both within the community, um, and outside the community, would be disappointed to see Richardson Dam and the entrance to that conservation area become, you know, kind of, it would probably be cold or miss for a while if that were done. And that's probably the extent of what we, what we talked about. I mean, and the one thing I should say, which isn't just about reaching it or not reaching it, um, is that all, all around the table, we, regardless of what we do, we don't want to totally deplete the conservation fund. We, as I spoke about that last week, that's, that hasn't changed. That's it.
Do we have a sense how much that would cost? The ecological study that there itself is talking about? Does anyone approach these companies about?
I, I, I haven't gone for a price on that, you know, except to say again, and, you know, the Conservation Commission has already spent some money on approaching the Richardson Dam concept. Uh, and, and I would say we're not opposed to further where, where, I would suspect, a study by, uh, an expert in that area would not be affordable, I think, even within the, the conservation fund. Because like I said, that's part of, that's part of what the Conservation Commission should do is to provide information about natural resources. And if, if we were pushed and encouraged towards doing that, uh, we haven't voted up for anything, but I, I, I think we would be pretty good with that.
Yes. What do you think we should do?
I don't know. I don't, I, I, I could live with either decision. As a resident of Barrington, I hate to see three hundred thousand plus dollars, you know, go, go in that direction. But it, we know it can't stay as it is. I mean, it just can't, you know, so some, you know, and so if it has to be done, it has to be done. And if the town and the commission have to spend some money on it, then that is what it is. It won't, it, it, it won't make, even doing that won't make Barrington destitute, mind you. It's, it's a heck of a way to have to spend all that money, but it has to be, it has to be. We, I, I, and I'll say it out loud. I think we can afford it as a town, but, uh, it's unfortunate to spend that money. And I'm torn on, on reaching it. I mean, I, um, I, I'm told by people who are smarter than I am. I'm, I'm not a scientist. I taught eighth grade science, but that doesn't make me a scientist. But I'm told by people in the science field that it's very often good to reach dams in the long run. It's, it's, but then I'm hearing people say, you know, what's that gonna look like? People not only love the Pooh Trail, they love Richard's Dam. They love to stick a fishing rod into it. They love to see a great blue heron fly over it, you know, looking for lunch. And that goes, that goes away. It's no longer, it's no longer Richardson Pond. However, I have to add, uh, Charlie Tatum, who's, uh, a member of the commission, is also chair of the subcommittee called the Trails Committee, was giggling as we were talking about that because he was dealing with, it was an issue about, um, beaver flooding the town forest. And he said, you know, if we breach that dam, it's not unlikely that beaver might come in and build their own dam and we'd still have a pond. I don't know whether that's accurate, but.
There's actually pretty decent dam activity farther up on the, um, Richardson, off Young Road, um, on, on Richardson Pond. I mean, pretty substantial. Not to mention, the, the beaver have been trying to dam up the spillway of the Richardson Pond Dam. They, they successfully raised the level of Richardson Pond by Brian Lindsey's estimation, um, over twelve inches, uh, by damming up the spillway, so.
And Brian and Doug Winter went out there with poles and tools and, and broke it up so that the water could move through.
The Beaver Busters.
So, so I, I don't know. Would, it, would.
They pay for maintenance?
The Beaver. I don't know.
Was this far across from redemption?
Yes.
I've fished that for many years. I know there's no fishing there. Just, just to be clear.
Okay, I, I, I don't fish.
I had a lot of lost hours with that pond.
I, 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 I don't, and, and I honestly, you know, but it was my little past. I don't know. As long as I've been here in the commission, this has been on the table. And I sure like to see it off the table in some way or other. Um, and, and I know we can't, you know, continue forever and ever to kick it down the road. And, you know, and, anything we do, somebody's gonna be unhappy, but I, I don't want to be flipped and say that's why you guys get the big bucks. You know, it's kind of true.
Breaching it still involves building a bridge and so, you know, the, the price tag's not likely gonna be cheaper, but.
Well, either way, because I think the dam estimate, did that have, did that include building a lochway or a road?
Yes. Yeah. And actually, the engineer, um, their design, um, was to replace the spillway with a box culvert, um, that you could drive over. So you wouldn't need a separate structure for a bridge. So you kind of kill two birds with one stone. But, yeah, either way.
If, if you breach the dam, would that damage the Pooh Trail or just the avoidance? I'm trying to think how would the fact that the trail, sorry.
Just that rips down, drops into a gorge, goes over by Guttles' Pit, swings around, drops into the Malago Bridge, keeps working a sway around that, uh, eighteen mile subdivision, uh, by the Google property, goes under one twenty-five, continues on all the way up to, uh, High Ridge Waltons.
I'd walk a good part of it. In the spring, would it cause any flooding on Malago where that, where the brick ends up? It's pretty high there.
It's, it's high there and I think it used to be high because it, it probably wasn't a dam there years ago. But I was trying to think about, okay, yeah, if we let all that water out or if it's staged it, you know, only so much comes out at a certain time. Um, you know, is it gonna be this rapid rush and flash flood? No.
Like, so I don't mean just breaching it. I mean, like in the spring, you have all the rains, but it starts to fill up that, it's, you know, it's gonna send more water down Malago.
Right. It's gonna, and it's gonna produce more water, which actually would have, uh, a ton of bad parity because that dumps out of the reservoir down there. We know each summer that we've been going over there, that it's been getting drier and drier and drier. So it could have the potential to help.
Yeah, the, um, because it's not a managed dam, um, it, it likely wouldn't have a dramatic impact either one way or the other because the spit, the elevation of the pond, um, whether it's draining or not, is determined by the elevation of the spillway. And so the watershed remains the same. Um, the one thing that would make it different, um, is if we had a dry fall and an especially wet winter, then in the fall, the level of Richardson Pond would fall below the spillway and create capacity, dammed capacity, so that in the spring, the spring thaw, there wouldn't be spring flooding downstream until the spillway, until the water reached the spillway. And that's why with the managed dam like Swains Lake, the road agent, uh, the dam monitor, um, draws down the lake, uh, lower in the, uh, fall, uh, to prevent ice damage, but also to create capacity for the spring thaw so that, um, he can let the water out in a, in a metered way. So if the select board, um, the, if the select board were going to make a decision, I don't think the decision has to be made about removing the dam or not. Uh, but I think the decision that we do have to make is, are we going to try to put a warrant article on the warrant in twenty twenty-three? Taking the temperature of the room and the last conversation, it seems like we're not collectively ready for that. Um, and in, in anticipation of that conclusion, which I'll let you come to in a second, I asked the dam bureau, um, on what it would mean if this project were delayed, which not putting it on the warrant doesn't necessarily mean the project will be delayed. Um, you know, select person Gibson mentioned, uh, at the last meeting that the select board could choose to use ARPA funds to pay for a portion of the project in twenty twenty-three. It'd still be a twenty twenty-three project. Um, so that out of the way. If it did have to be delayed from twenty twenty-three, the dam bureau would be acceptable. That would be acceptable to the dam bureau. Um, they identified certain remediation tasks that would have to take place, sealing some of the seepage, repairing any animal damage, doing some vegetation control. Um, the, the spillway is, is leaking a lot. Uh, I forget what it's called when the water gets under the spillway and. Um, the, the spillway is, is leaking a lot. Uh, I forget what it's called when the water gets under the spillway and around it, but. There's, there's a word for it. Um, and, and that would have to be mitigated a little bit. Um, but they basically said that, um, it's a low hazard dam, the town's working on it, that's good enough for them. They're not going to penalize the town. Um, so, so you have full exposure in your decision making. What are your thoughts on two thousand and twenty-three warrant article?
Um, just to kind of clear it up, I mean, what, between now and then, okay, that dam goes out. What are we gonna do then? Are we gonna get penalized? Cause I, I heard that in there, so, you know, what is it though? Okay, well, natural occurrence and. You know, went back through again and here we are.
Yeah. So just talk about that conceptually a little bit. So it's a low hazard dam, which means that based on their calculations. Um, if there was a failure in a fifty year flood event, um, it's not likely to cause a lot of property damage. Um, based on the capacity of the pond and what's downstream and all the rest. That's, that's how it gets its classification as a low hazard dam. Um, if, if there was a failure, um, and there was property damage. Um, there would be an evaluation of, of the cause of the failure. If they determined that the town was negligent maintaining the dam, uh, you know, through the letter of deficiency and, and things like that. The town could be liable for damages caused by the dam failing. Uh, I don't think that, I don't think dam failure is incredibly likely based on the advice from the towns engineer and the engineers from the dam bureau. Um, you know, that they have degrees to, to come to professional conclusions about this. I don't think that's likely. But I think that if it did fail and we were shown, um, to, to have deficiently maintained the dam, that the town would be exposed to liability.
The remediations that you mentioned, is that something that we can handle internally in the town? Can the town, the town road agent do that or do we need to hire someone?
That would be the next, that would be the next decision for the select board to make. So I'll tell you that the, that boards prior. Established a, what's called a highway billing policy, which says that if the highway department, um, uh, does work. In conjunction with non-operating budget activities, um, most specifically at the time, recreation and conservation. Um, then the, those funds would be billed for the highway department's time. Um, part of the motivation for that was actually the highway department doing some work on Richardson Pond Dam. Very nominal work. I think some buckets of gravel. I don't remember. Um, I wasn't here at the time. Um, so anyways, I would have to talk to the road agent. I would want to have his opinion on capacity and capability. Uh, but that would be a policy direction of the select board if you wanted the staff of the highway department, um, to address those items or look elsewhere.
We know how far along the engineering study is looking at what it would cost the new proposal for reconstruction. And if they're not that far along, how much more would it be to ask their input on reaching it as opposed to rebuilding it?
That's a good question. I'll take the first one first. So I met with the engineer, um, after the Green Hill Road Bridge pre-bid meeting. Um, to talk to him about his progress and he shared with me the engineer cost estimate. Um, and we talked about it and, and he's reworking some of the numbers. So. The engineer's cost estimate was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to reconstruct at a non-jurisdictional elevation. So, um, in the time that I had to review it, uh, a couple of things stood out at me. One, there was a, a ten percent, um, um, contingency. Uh, traditional construction contingency. And then on top of that, there was an additional twenty-five percent inflation contingency. Um, which the, his point was. We've seen astronomical inflation and I, and I want to make sure that you have a number which accurately reflects what the price might be in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-five percent seems high. I, I, I hope that it's high. Uh, but anyway, so that includes twenty-five percent. The other assumption that it included is it included the assumption that the, um, level of Richardson Pond. Would be maintained throughout construction, um, which was, which was not the preliminary agreement of the stakeholders. Southeast Land Trust and the Dam Bureau Conservation Commission, um, discussed doing a, a seasonal. Uh, level reduction, and that's where the fall timeline came from. So that at seasonal low water, um, the water level could be further lower to aid in construction. Uh, which would be much more cost effective, uh, because you're not, um, you know, driving the sheet piles or whatever they call them, those big things. So, um. Less than three hundred and seventy thousand. So short answer that question. And then as far as, um, removal. The woman from the dam bureau gave me the contact information from their dam removal expert at the dam bureau. Your state of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has one of those. So, um, I intend to have a conversation with him. Um, because I think he'll be a better resource for questions like that than our, um, engineer. Because quite frankly, they don't build or destroy a lot of dams, but there's dam removal expert. Uh, and I will also ask him about, um, grant funding opportunities because I've heard rumors. That you can't get any grants to fix dams, but you can get grants to remove dams because it's, as Mr. Grossman mentioned, it's, um. It's a popular thing. Um, it's a, it's, I've been identified as a policy initiative.
I, I, I'm remembering now, the other group that helps pay for dam removal was the Nature Conservancy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And they, they've done several, including the one in Dover on the Beltway. They, they paid for, a grant from them paid for a third of that cost.
Wow.
Which is, can be real.
Can be real. So I will have those conversations, um, and report back.
Just remind you, on the first, uh, proposal of engineering study for rebuilding it, the Cadillac, what was that phrase?
Um, up, up to four hundred something.
Four, four, two, I think.
Four hundred and twenty? Do, do you remember the SLR report? Okay. I can get you that though.
We were expecting this one to be. That's a.
We were, but the, the inflation since then, I think, I think if we are going to compare apples to apples, we would need to update that. Um, original estimate to be, you know, twenty twenty-two dollars, which aren't as valuable as, as late twenty twenty dollars.
I ask another question, um. Going back to how to pay for the work that would have to be done in advance of that. You know, historically, another select board had that policy of the highway department would bill. And in that case, the Conservation Commission was billed, which wasn't very expensive. But without knowing the scope of that, we realized that it wouldn't have. That wouldn't have to be the policy. I mean, it could be that the highway department simply does it when, when they have time, when they're. Slack in some way and that the Conservation Commission was not billed. That would be. Conservation Commission would like that better.
And the select board can change that policy direction with a motion and a vote.
One, two, point out that they, you could, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think there's some sense. We don't know what that would cost either. So, it may be. Maybe a pretty big chunk of change in work.
You added something.
I think we can, uh, all benefit from some more information, uh, before making an educated decision, but.
But we're thinking no two thousand and twenty-three warrant article. That's the, the headline.
I feel like it's being rushed.
Yep. So, um, we will, we'll take our time, get the information, flesh these things out. We'll, um, get a number for an ecological study. We'll talk more about pricing and grant opportunities for dam removal, um, and, and we'll go from there.
Would you like me to inquire about the ecological study?
That would be fantastic.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And we don't meet as, that's fantastic. We don't meet as a select board again. Yeah, that would be reasonable. We have time. The next select board meeting isn't until the 10th, and that's the budget public hearing. So we won't be attending to regular business. And then after that, it's the 23rd.
I don't do it right.
On your schedule, Mr. Grossman. Okay.
Okay, sir.
Okay, thank you all.
Very much. Okay, the next, um, item on the agenda is the noise ordinance. Too much ordinance. Then we have what? Two or three on the board, not butchered. Really enforceable, is that?
We have one. Um, the problem is it was properly established in two thousand and one, uh, at a vote of town meeting pursuant to RSA thirty-one, thirty-nine. Um, the trouble is in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, the select board took it upon themselves to make amendments to that noise ordinance. Um, which aren't legal because the town meeting didn't give the select board the authority to amend the noise ordinance. And so I, um, identified that, uh, this summer. Um, and reported on it to the select board. And at the same time, I had a conversation with the chief of police, uh, who acknowledged that. The ordinance as it's constructed currently right now is pretty difficult to enforce from a law enforcement standpoint anyways. Because they don't have certified decibel meters, uh, which is the basis for the noise ordinance. And so he offered then, um, to talk with his counterpart, uh, counterparts in other communities that have enforceable noise ordinances. Uh, and help draft a proposal, uh, which incorporates the amendments from sixteen and seventeen. Um, but also is something that he feels comfortable that him and his staff can enforce. Um, so.
This needs to be, this is a warrant, this would be a warrant article that has to be approved by the vote.
Yes, sir. You were just, uh, giving nuts and bolts on, um, how this would be enforceable and better than the other one.
So basically, when we go to a noise complaint with the noise ordinance, the way it's written currently, we throw it out. Um, it's irrelevant to our life because we don't have noise meters. If we did have noise meters, who certifies them? There are people that can certify them, but like anything else, if it's not the state of New Hampshire, it's probably not going to hold up in a quarter of a month. Um, so the noise ordinance written right now, we don't use, we haven't used it in, can't even tell you how long. Uh, so we fall back on disorderly conduct. A lot of what you see in the body of that. Ordinance that I proposed falls back on the disorderly conduct statute. But it gives us a way to mitigate taking a person under New Hampshire RSA. Versus going a little bit easier and writing it under the town ordinance. It's less expensive. It's not an understate RSA. It is just an ordinance violation and it's easier to deal with for everybody. So it's given us a less intrusive way of dealing with the public when we deal with them. Um, other than that, I mean, realistically, what we put into that ordinance. Is everything that's going to be covered under disorderly conduct anyway. And it keeps our exemptions there. It keeps our fireworks exemption that we added in, which I fully agree with. Uh, if you look, and I didn't give you the source material, like any good piece of work for law enforcement, I copied that. Uh, I pulled from Lee and from the town of Durham. Uh, the town of Durham obviously deals with noise complaints a lot more than we do. And they're very successful in dealing with them, which is why you have what you have in front of you. The town of Durham did not exempt agricultural equipment. Uh, the town of Barrington, we should be exempting agricultural equipment. So. Where there were differences, I erred on the side of what Barrington is historic. So I kind of morphed Durham, which is a CLIA certified agency. I took from Lee's somewhat because Lee was a CLIA certified agency. So I took those and morphed them into something that I thought fit Barrington and still met. The ideas that Durham had put in there. Uh, there's language in Durham's that. We don't have to have a reporting party. As long as a reporting party gets me to an area. My officers then become complainants in a noise ordinance situation. Uh, so if somebody is complaining about their neighbor's stereo, we don't have to throw their neighbor under the bus. That phone call gets us to that location anonymously. We become the complaining party at that point in time. We stand on the road, we hear on the reasonable noise, we can address the situation. So it, it gives us a good enforceable, um, as far as the fines are concerned. I use what I had in front of me. I'm not settling the fines one way or the other. If y'all want to modify those, I'm certainly not gonna. Fight one way. Higher, I, I honestly don't care. We're not about money. We shouldn't be about money. We should be about making sure that we can correct situations.
Or exemptions, um, kind of in line with the agricultural exemption. What about animals like dogs, roosters?
Dogs have their own, uh, under our state, and there's specific statute for dogs by, for excessive periods of time. I'm just not sure I've ever received a rooster call. So, yeah, I'm not sure I've received a rooster call. It's compelling that situation is, again, you, you fall back on what you know. We're not in the middle of Dover. We're not in the middle of class that we're not in the middle of Salem. Certainly, if you bought a rooster and threw it in an apartment building. That's problematic. Uh, in Barrington, if you've got a rooster, kind of the cost to do a business or not.
Yeah.
That's how I see it.
Yeah. So, so what I'm hearing is you don't think that there needs to be an exemption for roosters because you're not hearing that as common complaints.
Rooster call.
Yeah.
Uh, if we had that type of, it would be my answer.
Trying to think if it would, if it would fit any, any, under any of the. Did it not? Yeah. Um, two, two topics of conversation, um, time, we'll start with. So the last noise ordinance basically went, um, applied after nine PM and before six o'clock AM. Um, the, I think Durham's had a, a noise window, allowable noise window. Um, during the week and a different window on the weekend. Um. For the sake of keeping it simple and kind of mirroring closer to the, um, last ordinance. Uh, we resolved at ten PM to six AM, seven days a week. Um. When, when we were talking about nine versus ten, um, the, the chief of police appropriately acknowledged that. We're not the same Barrington in two thousand and twenty-two as we were in two thousand and one. So maybe we can be louder between nine and ten than we could have then. Uh, but it's up to the select board. I mean, do you feel like that time window is appropriate? Fair enough. Okay. And then the second one is fines. And so, um. The last ordinance, the, the last ordinance was like, uh, the language was up to a thousand dollars, I think it said. Um, I think it just included the maximum allowed by the statute. Um.
The odds of us ever writing a noise ordinance ticket for a thousand dollars is zero.
Exactly.
Well, not only that, we're not writing against, well, this will be the noise ordinance.
Right. With this passed, I think it's again, a much more reasonable fine structure.
Yeah. Um, and so the fine instructor, fine structure of, um. Fifty, a hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars, um, escalating, um, is it, do you feel like that's enough to disincentivize the activity?
Yeah.
Hopefully, most people, you know, the cruiser pulls up in front of your house and talks to you is enough to disincentivize you. Okay, yeah, sorry. I, I, I do want to be a good neighbor. I like, I like my neighbors in Barrington. I want to be a good neighbor.
And as much as. As much as the noise ordinance covers multiple infractions. If I'm going back to the same location multiple times, first time, yeah, I'm gonna use the noise order. Second time, yeah, I'm probably gonna use the noise ordinance. If I have to go back to the same residence a third time in a short amount of time, I'm going to disorderly conduct. And that's gonna be the instructions I give any of my people as well, is if we're gonna continue going down this road with individuals and they're not going to listen to us. That lesser isn't working. Um. We're not about money. Like I said, we're about changing behavior. It's the same as a motor vehicle stop. Our job as police officers is to change driving behavior. If I can do that with a warning, fantastic. If I warn you twice, clearly warnings aren't working and I have to escalate to a summons. This applies. I'd rather change your behavior with my first knock on the door and say, hey, knock it off. If that doesn't work, the second, we're gonna go to the noise ordinance. We go back again in a week, we're gonna use the noise ordinance again. After that, clearly that's not working. We're gonna go and you're gonna get the C. judge and then he can send the message.
And these, these fines don't go to the general county, do they? Go.
Noise ordinance go to GF.
They would. If they're charged under RSA, then it goes to state.
The court system.
Yeah, the court.
Just explain to me what lawfully discharging fines are.
Lawfully discharged firearms, any discharge of a firearm, it's not unlawful. I know that's a dance around.
Well, that's a good answer.
Yeah. So obviously we have, there's compact areas in the town of Barrington. Uh, if you discharge a firearm in a compact area, not lawful discharge of a firearm. Um, Joe Average Citizen shooting on his lot, which meets setbacks and everything else, lawful discharge of a firearm. If he's doing it recklessly, not lawful discharge of a firearm. And we have violations of law for that specifically. Um, we've had situations where individuals have been shooting on lots and those bullets have found their way. Where they shouldn't have gone and they were charged appropriately. Those are not lawful discharges. But as a rule, most discharging of firearms is a lawful discharge of a firearm. It's obviously.
Somebody's started shooting after ten o'clock at night, that's an exception.
Yeah.
And so this is something that the select board, um, at the request of residents, um, delved into. Pretty deeply in two thousand and twenty, I think. Um, and so the, the root of the, um, ability for the select board to do something about it. If they wanted to or didn't, um, goes back to RSA one fifty-nine, twenty-six. Um, and that's a state preemption on, um, locality. And that's a state preemption on localities regulating the use of guns at all, to include sound from guns. And so, plain and simple, the town simply doesn't have the authority to regulate the sound of guns through, through a noise ordinance or other means. And so the, the chief and I had a brief conversation about including the exemption or not. We don't have to include the exemption of lawfully discharging firearms in the noise ordinance for the result to be the same. The, the town still can't regulate the lawful discharge of firearms. Including the noise ordinance makes it perfectly clear so that when somebody calls and says, my neighbor's target shooting at eleven o'clock at night, there's a noise ordinance and here it is, instead of the chief police calling them the next day and explaining, well, you have to understand RSA 15926 means that we can't regulate the noise from lawful guns. It's here. It's in the ordinance. It's, it's a little bit quicker to get to that.
And that's not to say that there's not going to be a response at eleven o'clock gunfire call. Because if we're shooting at eleven o'clock, we may have other issues to address. Why are we doing that? Are we shooting at a coyote that's bothering somebody's rooster? In that case, probably doing it as a safe man. But if somebody's outside just, you know, burning through a bunch of ammo at eleven o'clock at night, is it lit? Are they doing so safely? Do we have a reckless issue? There are other situations involved there at eleven o'clock at night versus just the noise ordinance. So it doesn't necessarily mean that's not a call for service. It just means it's not a call for service under the noise ordinance specifically.
Maybe we add in parentheses per RSA 15926? Okay.
Are people that do hunt coyotes?
Sure, absolutely.
It's legal.
January first, right?
You know what I mean? So it's not all, you know, the gangsters and rednecks.
Okay, the last thing, and I hesitate to bring it up, but if we don't, I, I would be remiss if I didn't. The fireworks exemption. So if I get complaints about the noise ordinance, it's about the exemption for fireworks. And I will tell you my personal opinion. I don't think that's a reason to change the noise ordinance. But I just want you all to be able to make decisions eyes wide open. There is a contingent of Barrington residents that, that strongly disagree with the exemption for fireworks from July first to July sixth every year. Believe from. No, 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 no. They want it nonexistent. Yeah. So this has been this way in Barrington for a long time. I think what I've heard from the police chief, or actually, I think it might have been Chief Williams. People are going to do it anyways. And the, unfortunately, public safety is busy around Fourth of July. And so responding to a lot of noise complaints because of fireworks on Fourth of July, when there are things burning and there are vehicle accidents and, and all the rest. Anyways, I just want to make sure that you have the opportunity to have a discussion on the exemption for fireworks from the first to the sixth of July. And if you'd like to make any changes.
I don't see these will change it. You know, we've given people dates and if they don't like it, you know, they need to make a special trip out of town. And we go out, so you said legal fireworks.
So he said legal fireworks. Some communities have local regulation on, on fireworks. If they're, if they're not legal fireworks, I imagine we'd go a different route than the noise ordinance. We'd probably go. Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the terminology is for. South of the border. Right. No, no, it's a good question, though.
Are we, are we saying that fireworks are legal in that time period? Should there be any understanding that there is?
The legal you can manufacture a firework, but it has to be lit on the same day. In the absence of an ordinance restricting fireworks in the state of New Hampshire, the fireworks we purchased in a legal fireworks store in the state of New Hampshire, they're legal in the community in the absence of a ordinance that clearly restricts them.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Business issue here.
Okay, so then we will prepare a warrant article, which will be a summary of this. This entire ordinance won't be on, on the warrant and prepare that for the warrant. Just like the zoning amendments and the TIF district and other things where people aren't seeing everything, it will be important to make sure that residents know where to find this, which should be on the town's website. We'll, you know, get it out there. Twenty twenty-three warrant will be the webpage with everything to do with the warrant. And I expect a lot of conversation about, I expect that this will spur conversation about fireworks and gun noise and things like that. So hopefully you all have the tools to, to address those questions. And if not, feel free to send it to me or Chief Joy, otherwise. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so I took. I just, I took everything that we talked about and put it into the document that's required to be compiled to properly establish a TIF district. So nothing should really be, nothing in here should really be any different than we already talked about. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about the development program. That's really the what of, of a TIF district. The document is organized by the state statute sections. So RSA 162 dash K is the TIF district statute. And this goes through sections one through sixteen and addresses the requirements of each section. There's a narrative introduction at the beginning. It talks about the background establishing the authority for TIF districts. We're going to have a hearing as required by statute. The map is, is included. It's on the cover. It's also in the document. The appendix at the end is a list of every individual property by map and lot that would be included in the district, the acreage and the current assessed value. The section six is, is really the focal point of this document. That's the development program. That explains what any funds would be spent on. And so that incorporates the three categories we talked about. The civic use public facilities, the utilities and transportation. And there's subcategories and further descriptions of each of those. Grants will, you know, grants can be used towards these projects, bonds. We don't intend to pursue any bonds at this time. If, if we did in the future, it would be a decision of town meeting. And then the tax increment financing plan. And so this is where it's a little bit different than a traditional TIF district establishment. Most of the time, you establish a TIF district, you establish a bond and your finance plan says we're going to repay this bond that's this amount every year and, and these are our, our costs. For this program, it makes it immediately clear that funds would only be available to spend once they're received. No funds would be spent before. But the list of the development program is comprehensive to make sure it captures everything that we might want to do in this TIF district. So the financing plan requirements requires an estimated cost of the entire development program. It's important that everybody understands that the, the town of Barrington does not intend to do everything on the development program. That is a wish list of items that stakeholders identify the select board review. Anyways, you have to have a cost of the entire development program and that's estimated at forty-five million dollars. So the first forty-five million dollars from the TIF district would be able to fund all of those things if we wanted to. But that would be hundred, hundreds of years. Sources of revenue, so the eighty million dollars, eighty million dollar, eighty million is the current assessed value of all the properties in, in the district. And so if forty million dollars were added, or if twenty million dollars were added in assessed value. I didn't end up including here. I was going to say how much that was. I think it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue. So twenty million dollars of added value, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue towards the program. But anyways, bonded indebtedness is zero. Duration of the program, so we talked about how it's a good idea to have a sunset clause, but the select board never really made a concrete decision. I have proposed that we present it with an automatic expiration in twenty years. So that gives a sunset. That, that means that you have to take an active step to stop that freight train. And if there's good reason, then voters could decide that. But if no action's taken, it's going to snow here. I think that's a good idea, but it's the select board's decision. So if you speak now.
If you re-up a TIF district at that point, does that then bring everything back down to zero and then you count the revenue?
The great question. No, no, you can, there, there are provisions for amending a TIF district. And so those, if you follow those provisions, then you can maintain the captured assessed value. The diff, if you expand the district, the value of the parcels that are added are when they're added, not when it was initially established. Good question, though. Okay. Perfect. Okay.
Twenty years works. I'd make a motion to approve the town center TIF district development program and finance plan as presented and include the establishment of the town center TIF district on the twenty twenty-three town meeting order.
Second.
Move the second in all in favor.
Fantastic. Very exciting.
The business.
I would be glad to. So the select board knows, knows this information from conversations in non-public. But a brief summary for the community's benefit. So in, on October seventeenth, the select board adopted the recommendations of the wage study and agreed to offer the police union to open the existing contract and offer those wage changes to the union members as well. That is historically how the select board has approached making changes to any compensation. If it's going to happen for employees, it's going to be offered to the union and vice versa. So on November tenth and December first, the town and the police union met to discuss the proposed contract. We discussed a variety of topics of the existing contract, updating some components of the contract. And the result is a tentative agreement. And so the purpose, part of the purpose of this meeting is to have the select board take a formal vote to approve the tentative agreement, which I'll summarize the changes in a minute. That will also be approved by the union membership. And the cost items will be finally approved by voters on the March warrant. And so that's what makes it tentative, is that the cost items need to be approved by voters. So I included in your packet a redlined agreement and I'll just briefly address the, let's see, the changes. So the, there are wage increases from the wage study. It also includes guaranteed step increases for employees in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, which is the length of the contract from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. The vendor paid outside detail rate will increase to sixty dollars per hour. There'll be an increase in holiday pay to a hundred and twenty hours to reflect closer to the length of their shifts. There will be a three-hour differential for field training officers, training for the shifts that they train or incoming officers. Then there will be increased compensatory time to eighty hours. So, and like I said, there were some out of date sections that we updated. So the cost items are what is included on the warrant. And so this bold section that says total, that's what will be included on the warrant. It will reflect a sixty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two dollar increase in twenty twenty-three. Estimated at forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two in twenty twenty-four and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and six in twenty twenty-five. And then I provided below that the three cost items, what component of that total is made up of those three cost items. Happy to answer questions.
But believe you said that the, the police union understands that even if we approved here, it has to be approved by voters.
Yes.
I think it sounds great. The voters need to vote on it.
Of course.
What happens in contract negotiations, the voters are approved?
So there'll be, you'll see two warrant articles. The first one is the collective bargaining agreement cost items. And the second one is the, the ability to renegotiate, which is the town meeting gives the, if both of those articles fail, then what's it called? When a contract extends, extends green? Evergreen. But in this case, the contract, it doesn't expire until twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the tentative agreement as presented and included, the cost items in the twenty thirteen town meeting. Gibson seconds. Question in all favor.
Fantastic. Thank you for the support.
Second item is donation request that the last meeting mayor and I were Mr. Russell. Offered to present or to donate to the police sergeant to bribes estimated for at least six hundred dollars. Yep, I'm saying it right. Mr. Russell?
I think thirty-eight hundred, but you're, yes. You're right in the area.
And I ask, we asked the police chief to review the request and prepare, prepare a recommendation for the select board, which you can have a copy of that, by the way, if we just made that. Mr. Russell, do you have a copy?
No.
If you like.
But I think I know the reasoning.
Yeah. Can I summarize it quickly?
I don't disagree with the police chairman.
The basic needs considered public perception based on having involvement of the legal process. And please could recommend not accept donation at this time. Recommendation, please, she, we of course can make other decisions.
I'm actually okay with that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's unfortunate, but it's a circumstance.
I think we have to, as we stand behind Mark and Rick and, you know, those guys know their day to day. And, you know, I think we have to respect the chief after this role.
It makes, I mean, it makes sense. And thank you for, thank you for generosity.
Thank you.
Once we get stuff taken care of, the cases that I'd like to do it, so thank you.
Yeah, probably, probably they have the elections too, which will be in March. So who knows when your legal business. All right. I think we've addressed that. Select board member reports.
Anybody most of this discussions and not yet approvals of anything? I will talk about one case where we rejected a potential request from a resident to sell about its property. And what was interesting about it is that we needed to go back to the minutes of any board from nineteen eighty-one to look at their explanation of why they restricted the, they know some difficulties of that property. And for me, it was just like, taking good, keeping good records and good note, it is really important because it was the wording in the minutes that really informed the decision, I think, that, that deed indeed was respected.
Anything else?
Conservation commission met Thursday, went over a variety of things, including Richardson, Dan, which we heard from Ken. One other thing that brought this kind of interest, I found, is the, they're proposing a a point-based web led buffer ordinance, which you may have heard about in the playboy. And so now where the, the buffers seem kind of arbitrary, evenly applied, well, to different situations, this would be a whole set of criteria that ranks and gives some different points that we then set the size of the buffer. And it seems to me that that could be a good tool and you know, for the zoning board, they're trying to decide variances and stuff to look at those criteria as far as what, you know, factors influence a decision.
This town of Plastown has been using this point system for the town.
Anything else?
Over at the rec, they're talking along with before and after school programs and starting with summer camp registrations and doing their, their winter activities.
The Fuller Express looked like it was very popular. We went to the library and that did fairly place the park.
It was awesome. Yeah, they they did awesome. And Santa was there. It's crazy. In the rec gym. My kids were so surprised. Yeah.
The school board met last week. They presented their budget to the advisory committee. And advisory committee represented that two questions. And I didn't bring the piece of paper that gave the exact number, but I think it was twenty-seven million, something like that. It's a zero point eight one percent increase. Far enough, the school board is going to meet and have recommendations from the from their ABC. And so I'll have to find information for our next meeting.
So again, in the last set of warrants, when they they approved the increases for the teachers, wouldn't that be reflected in this year's budget? It seems surprising to me that there isn't more of an increase given the increase in salaries.
Well, keep in mind, they got six hundred thousand dollars less. They paid off their bond, so they don't have the six hundred thousand dollars they had last time.
Okay.
I have to, I got five million dollars. So that gets incorporated in that as well.
Thank you.
Transfer, I don't think I gave a really good report on the transfer station. Keep in mind for the public as well as select board, the transfer station will close at noon on Saturday, Christmas Eve. But they will stay, they will open in the morning. Tuesday, following Tuesday, be open from nine to four. That's like, but it will be closed at noon on Christmas Eve. And maybe on the night of January. And ABC. I'll be again. There, we'll be at the car. Absolutely. Anything else? Okay. Space, it's time for public comment. Again, the non-use every visitor can address one-time comments lasting three minutes, limited to three minutes. Public comment. Our visitor should not expect a response to their comments or questions since select board may not have discussed or taken a position on a matter. Public comment with not a two-way dialogue between the speaker of the select board and or the town administrator. Are there anyone else who'd like to make comments without coming in over here? Again, again, if you're on Teams, if you'll press the raise hand item, or if you're on telephone, there's star six, please be recognized. See a lot of activity here.
Seeing virtually.
All right. So we're closing public comment period. Do we have any? Yes, we do.
Like to make a motion to exit to the public. For matter of legal. Matter of legal, what less than you.
Second.
Sorry, yeah.
All there. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She.
Thanks.
I did not. I did not.